We're, we're recording, but we're having trouble with the streaming. I think we're just gonna go ahead and get started. We'll see if we can post the recording afterwards. Sorry about that. We had it all set up with a link. For some reason, it's not working now.
Okay, then, uh, let's kick it off with our regular board meeting for April twentieth, two thousand twenty. We previously had our executive session, so now we'll start with approval of our minutes from our March nineteenth meeting. If I could have a motion, please?
I'll, uh, start with the motion.
I can add.
Okay, do we have any questions, changes?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, there doesn't appear to be any, uh, indication as to the circumstances of the meeting, that it was close to the public, that it was broadcast on YouTube. You know, a- anything of that nature, it just, uh, indicates that the, uh, members of the public and, uh, community and, and the media were there, but the, the media wasn't there and the public wasn't there.
Is that a no news is good news kind of thing?
Paul, that can be changed. Um, once the minutes are, are done, any changes are done manually, I can make a manual note on those minutes.
Okay. It just seems, seems to me that that, you know, the, the circumstances of the meeting should be reflected somehow in the minutes.
Okay.
It was in the motion, I think it was in, uh, we did, I'm trying to find it. So it's under, it's in the resolution that we did for the COVID that talks about, we closed under number five, the emergency declaration COVID nineteen.
Right? All right, so Kevin, I really had a hard time hearing you. I'm not sure.
I, I, I think what he's saying is that the, uh, the, the issue that I'm bringing up is kind of covered in the, uh, the COVID nineteen emergency declaration that we also, that was approved and is in the minutes.
Okay.
Which I, I, you know, yeah, um, I, I guess it is, uh, addressed in that.
Well, if everybody's all set, then we'll take a vote, see if everyone agrees to approve the minutes. Although, show a hand. You're in favor, please?
Okay.
Looks like a pass. Thank you. I'm not aware of any board correspondence, uh, Pat?
No.
Next, uh, reports from board members. Um, the SOTAs committee, it looks like you're up first, Mr. Paredo.
Okay, are you able to hear me?
No.
Oh, my notes.
We do have the, the meeting minutes attached to our, uh, our emails. Move on to policy committee. Trustee Haggett?
Um, everybody can hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, uh, the, uh, policy committee report is very short. We, uh, had not, have not had a meeting since our last Board of Education meeting and, uh, the, um, the policy regarding the therapy dog is on the agenda for tonight for adoption. So if you have questions about that policy, I hope you're gonna have them ready, uh, for discussion when we get to that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, finance committee, trustee Fountain?
Yeah, we met last week, uh, I think it was Thursday morning or is it Friday morning? It was every, I don't even know what day it is right now, half the time, so I think it was Friday.
It was Friday.
Um, you know, these, of course, are very uncertain times. Uh, the governor has put forth a flat budget, but has also, um, threatened mid-year cuts, um, and is now saying, uh, that he needs the federal stimulus package to, uh, another federal stimulus package to come through today. He said it'd be a twenty percent cut to education if that didn't. Um, it seems as though, um, our governor and our president are in a match. Um, you can, you can put a word in front of that if you'd like. And it kind of puts us out to dry as to how to plan. So I am hopeful that, um, you know, we can get more answers. As of right now, there's no planned budget vote. There's a lot of rumors going around, um, that may not even require a vote. Um, no one knows what's gonna happen. Uh, there's no clear answers on any of it. Um, what I can say is that luckily, uh, we are in a financial condition that puts us at an advantage, um, compared to some of our, um, local other districts in the, in the county. Um, Nick and Pat have done a great job, um, at, uh, um, keeping the finances, keeping our finance high enough to be prepared for something like this. I guess that's the way I wanna say it. And I, I for one, I'm thankful for that. Um, and hopefully we can weather the storm as more things, you know, become clearer. We're gonna share them with everyone, but as of right now, um, we're all kind of unsure what's gonna happen.
Okay, any questions for any of our committee chairman? Okay, not, uh, under the president, uh, we, we do have the BOSI's annual budget, uh, attached to our agenda. Uh, I think it was twenty-eight pages or so. Actually, a nice, nice package they put together. Uh, the two items we need to deal with tonight is, uh, nominate and vote for three members for the BOSI's board, and then also approve just the administration, administrative portion of their budget. So I guess let's start, unless we have discussion you wanna have with the budget, it's the, uh, BOSI's budget itself, uh, well, we can jump right into the candidates for the board. Okay, there's five candidates. Um, I'll read them off and then we can, we'll open it up for nominations. So it's, uh, Dr. William Cartwright. Uh, I don't have everything in front of me. Um, Richard Hamilton, Craig LaLone, Michael Miller, and Kevin Wells. If you open up the, the link, you can see there's a bio with each one and from what district they hail from. So I don't know if, I hope everyone had some time to look over a little bit and has an idea somebody they would like to nominate.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Cartwright.
Okay, we do not need a second, so we would just take a vote at this point. Now, all those in favor of Dr. Cartwright for the vote?
Uh, do we, do we not want to, um, uh, do all of our nominations before we vote?
Candy, I don't, in their past, what have we done? You're muted, Candy.
Sorry. Um, it's different every time, but I think
I couldn't recall who we did it.
I, I think you did one by one. I, I could be wrong. I think you did one by one. Somebody nominated. Um, you wanna avoid, you know, like, all five being nominated. If you wanna do three at one, that would, you know, stop that. The first three nominated, but it's up to you. I, I don't wanna do anything ill-advised.
Okay, we've got, uh, Dr. Cartwright. Is any, uh, anyone else have a person they'd like to nominate at this time?
I'll, I'll nominate Kevin Wells.
Okay. Any, uh, a third out there?
Can I nominate somebody else?
Yeah. Yeah.
Ri- Richard Hamilton.
Okay.
Okay.
We have three nominees out there. Any others? Okay, uh, well, I think, uh, Dr. Cartwright was the first to be nominated. All those that would be in favor of having Dr. Cartwright represent us on the BOSI's board, show your hand, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Any nays? Okay, I believe Kevin Wells was the second to be nominated, so vote on him. All those in favor of Kevin Wells?
Okay.
Any nays?
Kevin?
And the third to be nominated was Richard, Richard Hamilton. All those in favor of Richard Hamilton? Show, show our hands, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Any nays? Okay.
Kevin, are you abstaining? Kevin, are you abstaining or voting nay?
Am I allowed to say?
Not unless you have a good reason.
Nay.
No, okay, no.
Okay, so I think we, uh, I think we have our three, three candidates for the board, uh, Dr. Cartwright, Mr. Wells, and Mr. Hamilton.
Got it.
The next portion on our, uh, agenda was the BOSI's administration, administrative portion of their budget. The administrative total, I scratched some numbers down, but the administrative total for this year is eight million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. The previous year was seven hundred and seven million, five hundred ninety-two thousand, six twenty-three. That's a six hundred and two thousand dollar increase, about a seven point nine percent increase. So we are being asked to, by the BOSI's board, to approve that. Any questions before we vote on that? Okay, all those in favor to approve the administrative budget for BOSI's for two thousand twenty, twenty-one, please?
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, uh, reports from administration. We'll move right along.
Okay. So first is an update on, uh, the coronavirus pandemic planning. Uh, I think everybody, everybody knows that, uh, Governor Cuomo has extended the closing of schools through May fifteenth. Uh, if there isn't another executive order, we will be back on May eighteenth. So that's where we are right now. Uh, he had been going in a two-week segment. Uh, now, this was more like four weeks, so that, that continues to, to change. Food distribution schedule. Initially, we started out with, uh, food distribution each day, and then it was three days a week, and currently, we're following, uh, what several other schools in the region are doing in order to lessen the, uh, uh, safety issue, both for our workers and the community, would be go to bulk deliveries one day per week. We started that today. And, uh, it, it went quite well. Uh, we did increase, uh, the amount of food, uh, by eighty meals. Uh, but that wasn't enough. So we did have some, we did run out in, um, in several places, so we're going to have to plan accordingly next week. Um, it's been a little tough to gauge the, gauge because, uh, there's been times when it's been up to eight hundred and seventy, or over eight hundred meals, then it's, it's fallen down into the six hundred range, and now with this, uh, bulk, uh, meals. And with the bulk, instead of making sandwiches, we're providing bread, meat, cheese, as well as fruit, um, um, quarts of milk versus pints of, half pints of milk, so it's more of a bulk. But, uh, it went very well today. I can't say enough about our food service staff. I don't think anybody has called in sick in that group since this, in a month since we've been doing this. They've been out there every time we've asked them to, and they're doing an exceptional job. And we're providing lots of meals for, for our kids, our students. I think you all know that the region's exams have been canceled, but students, uh, in order to, uh, receive region's credit, need to pass the course. Uh, pass the region's course, and if they don't pass the course, then they would need to go to summer school. Uh, we're not really sure yet what summer school's going to look like. We're taking this, you know, one, one day at a time as everybody else is, but that is what came down on April sixth, uh, from the Board of Regents. So now the, all, all state testing has been canceled. There's a question? Can we ask? Thought somebody was coming through with a question. If you do, just stop me at any time. But, uh, that's the region's, uh, continuity of instruction. We, in the beginning, we had to submit, we were required to submit to SED three plans. One was how we're going to instruct students at, at home during the pandemic, how we were gonna provide food service, and how we were going to organize childcare service. Uh, we have submitted all of those plans. Uh, we anticipate that there, that state ed is going to request a, a update to all of the plant, well, to the continuity of instruction plan. We have, uh, provided a template for our, our teachers to provide instruction. It includes a, a daily video along with, with a structured set of slides, and our teachers are providing also assignments and feedback during office hours during the day. Uh, based on feedback that we received from both our staff and our parents and students, um, we have been, uh, adjusting as we go. Uh, for example, now at the seven through twelve level, rather than every day, having teachers, uh, submit a, a lesson, they're doing it on an A-B schedule so that students aren't overwhelmed. So they may have science, you know, English and social studies on one day in other classes, and then on the second day, science, um, and math. So it's more of a, a block type of schedule. And, uh, we just started that last week. Uh, there's a lot of questions on the hundred and eighty-day calendar, given that the, uh, there, due to, with the executive order, there was not a spring break. Um, so the question is, uh, when we reach that a hundred and eighty days, which we will reach, uh, prior to the normal ending of the school year, what will happen then? Uh, the governor's office is aware of the issue, uh, and is not looking for schools to exceed the hundred and eighty days, but it will take an executive order for, for that to, uh, be put in place as to when school will end. So at this point in time, we, we don't know when school uh, will be, will be ending, given that there wasn't a spring break, and we're paid for a hundred and eighty days in state aid. There's been a great deal of flexibility in special education services through state ed department. They recognize that we can't replicate services that are on the student's individual education plan, the IEP, when they're outside of school. Um, our staff is still providing instruction. We're providing tele, teletherapy basically with the speech, our speech therapists are, are trying to reach our students through, uh, through teletherapy. That seems to be going well and seems to be growing. And there is, uh, there will be a question after this is all over, whether we need to provide compensatory services for the, for our students. Uh, compensatory services would mean if we didn't provide the IEP services during the, this pandemic, what's that going to look like in, in the summer? Will we need to add additional services there? Um, that will depend on each student and whether there has been regression as a result of the the pandemic. A couple of other areas here that we're still waiting information on. One is APPR and tenure. Um, it is stated that we're still, it will take an actual governor's, um, directive on APPR, which is our teacher evaluation and principal evaluation. Uh, that also impacts tenure uh, because the APPR law is tied to tenure. For example, a teacher cannot receive an ineffective rating in their last year before tenure is, um, it, a tenure decision's made by the board. Currently, our APPR system, ha- half of it is based on testing. And since the testing has not been provided, the state testing, then we, we don't have a valid measure that we've negotiated with our staff for, for their evaluation. So again, we're waiting on that decision from the governor because it is in statute. Uh, we still do not know about the school budget vote and elections. Uh, the governor's order that dealt with it stated it would be June first, would be the earliest that that would occur. And so that has impacted our, um, our decisions on budgeting and board elections. Uh, Lauren talked about that earlier, whether, whether there's going to be, uh, some kind of decision that would state that there would need to be a public vote. Um, but at this point, it's, again, this has gotta come down as a, as an executive order. School construction, uh, the executive order there has allowed school construction to proceed. I'm gonna talk about that in a, in a moment. Um, if the district determines it's vital and if we provide proper disinfecting and social distancing during construction. And on the agenda tonight, finally, you do have a couple of memorands of agreement with our support staff and our teachers, which basically recognizes that they have, they've had different responsibilities during this crisis, and then it's not precedent-setting once the crisis is over. And that's, uh, that's a look at where we are currently with our pandemic.
So Pat, just, you know, I'd like to take a minute, you know, I've expressed this to you directly, but I just think I'd like everyone to know what a great job you and your staff and all, I mean, from top to bottom, have done. Amazing. I know it wasn't glitch-free, but it was, uh, to go within a couple days almost, to go to distance learning and the IT group did a great job, the teachers did a great job, food service, I'm sure I'm missing people, but I, I'm really, really impressed how we've handled this, uh, this pandemic, so. I just, just kudos. I, you know, I said it before, but you, you deserve it.
Thank you. Yeah, it, it's not easy changing your entire instructional, uh, program around in a week. Right? It has been without its, uh, hand wringing and concerns, but, uh, by and large, everyone has stepped up and just realized that we have to continue to provide education and food and childcare to, to our our students, and, and the community's been great too. Uh, everybody's just been pitching in. We're really concerned, obviously, with our seniors. Our seniors, uh, you wait thirteen years to get this moment in the sun, and it's been really robbed from them. And so we're looking at ideas to try to, uh, try to honor them as we go through, including in case, uh, it's, this closing is extended until the end of the year, which is very well possible.
I agree with, uh, Mr. Brunkheady. Uh, congratulation to the teachers. I've seen, because I have kids in the system, I, I can appreciate what they've done, and I would like to make sure that you tell them that, that the board supports their effort and recognize all the efforts they made, because it's not easy to turn on a dime, and they're doing a great job.
Thank you, Robert. I'll make sure to pass all of them. Okay. Moving on to the budget, uh, Lauren uh, did talk about this in, in his presentation from finance committee. We did have a finance committee meeting last week. I think everyone knows that the state is, is in crisis financially. They're facing a ten to fifteen billion dollar deficit due to the coronavirus. Uh, to put that in perspective, uh, we were facing a ten billion dollar deficit during the Great Recession in two thousand eight-nine, and this, and, and that went over into the, into the few subsequent years there where a lot of schools had to, uh, had to cut staff. So this is, this is a financial crisis, and I think that's why you hear the governor talking a lot about needing another federal stimulus package that's going to be directly towards supporting states, and that includes education, because twenty-seven percent of the state budget is education. Uh, the other biggest portion is health, healthcare, and those are two tough areas to cut, but they're also, when it's your biggest expenditures, that's an area that the governor is going to have to look at. As you know, um, back when the legislature passed the budget on April first, they, uh, they did not increase foundation aid. They did allow the other, other aids, like transportation, BOSI's, and I'm formula. They didn't combine the aids like the governor wanted to, the expense-based aid, which was good. Um, and a lot of the other things the governor wanted to do in terms of aid, they, they did not allow, which is helpful for us in the short and long term. But, um, the governor had put back in January a five hundred and fourth million dollar increase to foundation aid for schools, and five hundred and four million dollars, we always consider that kind, at that time, um, would have been considered light, and would ask the legislature to help increase that. Um, now we're looking at, um, at zero, and it's not even really zero, because if you look at the state aid run, um, the, there was a reduction in state aid of one point one billion dollars, and, um, in the, if you look at our specific state aid run, Messina is being cut one point two million dollars. But the, you, on that same aid run, it's, it shows a, a, the Federal Cares Act, which adds one point two million dollars to our budget. So it totally offset at this point. The problem is twofold. The governor has been given the authority to look at our bu- the state budget at different intervals from now till the end of the year, the first time being April thirtieth. And if revenues are not coming in as expected or expenditures are more, uh, he can make, uh, adjustments to state aid. And, uh, we expect that that's going to occur if there is not another federal stimulus package. So that's, that's a concern we have, and the other concern is, uh, just as we saw in the Great Recession, when the federal money ran out, we still had a state deficit, and that's when we got into the gap elimination adjustment and further cuts to our state aid for a couple of years. So we are a long way to go when it comes to the budget, both at the state and the local level. So if we aren't, be, as Lauren said, because we do, we have, we do have some reserves, um, if we don't, uh, see significant cuts, uh, come April thirtieth or beyond, our plan would be to, to add some additional money from the fund, into the fund balance, into the, from our reserves into the designated fund balance, um, use some of our debt service fund that was left over from the last capital project. And then the one point nine percent tax levy increase that we, uh, talked about at the last board meeting to include that. And that would help us to break even to where we are now. If we see significant cuts, um, beyond where we are now, um, without federal aid, then we're going to have to take a relook at this and see, and see if, uh, we need to make, uh, some, some cuts in the budget. We do have some time, as I said, uh, June, normally the board would be voting on the school budget tonight. We've recommended that that be put off until May. We don't know when the budget vote's going to be to the public. We know that the direct, executive order says June first or sometime thereafter. So we have, my recommendation then was to put off the vote by the board, wait to see what comes on April thirtieth, and then have the finance committee take a relook, um, and see what recommendations we would make, uh, to balance the budget. Just for perspective, and when I talk about using more designated fund balance, last year, uh, which was this, this nineteen-twenty budget, the, the district was using one point five-six million in, in designated fund balance to balance the budget. That would go That would go to 2.25 million under our current plan. Back in 2014, 15, the the district was using 3.5 million. So since 2014, 15, at at 3.5 million, the the, you know, the board, the Finance Committee, etc., we've been able to pare that down to 1.5. We've gone from 3.5 million in use use of a reserve to the 1.5. We are recommending at this point to go up to 2.25. And so because it is for a rainy day and it is raining, it is raining and for sure. And we're also, if we also put in $300,000 more from that debt service fund, that will currently get us where we want to go with the 1.9% tax levy increase. 1.9% tax levy increase would generate an additional $278,000. Our current levy is 14.6 million on a $54.9 million budget. So to put that in perspective, about 27% of our budget is the local tax levy. The rest is paid from mostly state federal money and some other investments that we make, some local other local money. And so that's that's a snapshot of where we are in time right now with the budget. I think, as Lauren said, we're currently in in better shape than some because we do have some reserves that, you know, we're trying to maintain jobs, not make cuts right now, see our way through into next year. But if we see, you know, a hatchet come down on us by the state after, you know, the 30th, we are going to have to revisit where we are. Questions, comments? Okay, moving on to the capital improvement project. I do have Rob Gray here. He is, he's on, he's he's in the meeting.
I don't look like Mike Allen.
There's social distancing.
Can you hear?
Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Safari, yeah.
All right, good. Well, I'm going to be the good news guy. I think I could be the bearer of some good news. We have our 49 plus million dollars. It's not going to take that back, I don't think.
Maybe because you you might need to mute because you're in the same room.
Yep, I'm muted.
Yeah, as of now, it looks like our money is golden. Did you hear?
Yep.
Okay. We have some anecdotal evidence from two projects that we've just bid recently, the SLL BOSI and Herman DeKalb, our neighbors, basically. And our numbers came in good, lots and lots of interest, good contractors, and I think that bodes very well for the project. There's still hungry contractors out there, very excited and waiting on this project. And I I'm surprised, but I think the situation is actually helping our bidding climate. I really do. It's that's what that's what I'm saying. Be sure, it's like, want to get it out on the street soon. Phase one is waiting final blessing from SED. I spoke with Ed Burnour, our architect, this afternoon. He has spoken with Ann of facilities planning, and she has helped him out and given him the the folks that are actually doing the very final architectural engineering reviews names. They don't always give that out. And based upon what Ed's seeing and what it appears, we may be good to go by the end of this week. That's what we're hoping. And if that's the case, it will just be a day to pull the trigger and have the documents on the street, probably a three week bidding period. So we should be good to go on phase one. We're also having lots of meetings, good, real effective staff meetings last week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and the previous week as well on phase two. So we're basically fine tuning phase two. And fortunately, because of the research and what we found during our phase one, there's more money available for phase two than we thought we may have had at one point. So those priorities have been bumped up. Some of those priority twos are now going to be priorities one. Hopefully, the numbers are coming in good and we can do it all.
Sounds great. Sounds great.
Questions? Good.
Thank you.
Thanks for the good news.
Somebody needs it.
So we had talked about, could you turn that down? We, when we, on phase one, our goal had been to have the the board meeting on the 7th would be when after bid opening and that you would approve contractors at that time. That was the goal. Because this has taken longer, it's clearly not going to happen on May 7th at this point. So we'll need to have some discussion of whether we want to possibly postpone the May 7th meeting to to a later time. Or the choices to have the May 7th meeting and and then have a special meeting later just for the approval of the contracts. That's something I just want to put in your minds that are kind of our choices here. I think the May 7th meeting has always been early because we had the budget vote, public budget vote later in the month, and that's not going to happen. So you do have some flexibility there with the with the May, the board meeting. So just, those are kind of our couple of options there. We can make decisions later.
There's a pretty good chance there might be, you know, more or better state information to pass along at that time, huh?
Well, with the April.
Have the meeting for that reason.
Well, I'm wondering if if we find out on April 30th what the governor plans to do as far as state aid. If we did move the meeting, it might give us a little bit more time to have the Finance Committee meeting meet and and work out that information as well. If we were to move the the board meeting a little bit later. But I think let's see if we do, when we if we do get this out of state ed at the end of the week, that would be great. Then we got to look at, you know, three weeks from there before we can open bids. All right. Any other questions for Rob? Anything else on capital project?
Thank you.
All right. Just a couple of other quick things for me. Under donations, we did get a donation from Back the Pack. As you know, they've they have since 2011 been providing a exceptional service for our our students, providing after school snacks. They had a significant inventory that because of the coronavirus, they could not get out. And so they have donated those snacks that they could not get out to our food service. And it was two truckloads. It was $11,000, about $11,000 worth of food. And so we're using that as part of our food service program. And so we we've always appreciated Back the Pack and what they've done. But this this adds, you know, at a time when we really need it, adds even more. They haven't given up. They're not going away. They do plan when this is over is to do their fundraising, their spaghetti dinners and so forth to to build it all back up again. But right now, they just want to get that food out to us, and we're in a better position to distribute it than they are. And then we have the annual Trinity Catholic bus request on there as well. And that's it for me.
Okay, Nick in Mallory, our business office.
So I just have the budget status and budget transfer reports tonight. Year to date, we've brought in 41.28 million dollars. March was a big month. It's when the state does spring ahead state aid. And to date, we spent $31.1 million and to have 18.97 million incurred for the rest of the year. We should see some nice savings from substitute costs, utilities and whatnot from being closed for the duration that we are at this point. So the budget will come in lower than expected this year. And then just a handful of budget transfers for approval. Mallory?
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep, okay. On the extra classroom activity fund for the first quarter, we started January with 175,000 cash receipts of 99,000 and cash disbursements of 66,000, ending March with 208,000. And on the March Treasurers Report, we started with 29.2 million, cash receipts of 11.9 million, cash disbursements of 3.3 million, ending March with 37.7 million. On the internal claims audit report, five warrants verified for the amount of 1.3 million, 257 claims total verified with zero errors. And on the BOSI's audit report for March, one warrant was verified in the amount of 1.1 million, two claims total with zero errors.
Thanks, Nick. Thanks, Mallory. Any questions for those guys? Yeah, not, can move right on to our recommended actions. Again, we'll use a show of hands. I'll start off with our second readings or adoptions of the the following policies. I'll leave the last policy to ride on its own so we can have discussion. I know it's been a hot topic in the past, so I'll go through the first several and then the last one will take separate. Policy 5520, Extra Classroom Activities Fund. Policy 5530, Petty Cash Funds and Cash in School Buildings. Policy 5540, Publication of the District's Annual Financial Statement. Policy 5570, Financial Accountability. Policy 5571, Allegations of Fraud. Policy 5574, Medicaid Compliance Program Policy. And Policy 5580, Reserve Funds. Any questions on those? All those in favor for adoption?
Have a motion? Motion?
Oh, I need a motion. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'll go with a motion.
How about a second?
A second here.
Let's see some hands again. I'm sorry about that. Thank you. So let's do the the last policy. Policy 8214.1, Therapy Dogs. We want to have more discussion first of all.
Well, I'll I'll offer the motion for to get us started. I'll go with a second.
Okay, now we can discuss it, I guess, if we want to. Can you hear me? I can.
Speak slowly.
I have several questions. There's a committee reference in the policy that's supposed to be formed by the superintendent. My question is, will this committee be formed to review the current pile dog? Question two, what is the definition of a canine expert as referenced in that committee? Question three.
Kevin, Kevin, can I interject?
Is any legal abuse for the purposes of veterinary appointments or anything of that sort for the therapy dog? Question four.
Kevin?
He's already stopped, Candy.
Has he stopped? Pat, Pat Brady. Would it be possible for Kevin to call your conference phone? You turn the conference phone right in front of you and we can hear him?
And also, I'd like to know what is the process for the inclusion of access to the dog? Yeah.
Kevin, can you hear me? It's Candy. Kevin, can you call Pat's conference phone? And and he'll put you on speaker and we can hear you because we didn't hear out of, I think you had four questions, and I didn't get any of them.
Looks like he's calling.
Pat, you're on mute.
I sent Pat a list of my questions via email just now.
Yep, got him, got him. All right. So first question is, will the superintendent's committee?
Can I read them?
No, I I got him now, Kevin. Yep, I'll read them. Yeah, Kevin just sent me these questions. Will this, will the superintendent's committee mentioned be formed to review the current therapy dog application? Yes, the regulation that goes along with this is a therapy. Three.
I I did mention the conference phone, Kevin. There is a phone right next to Pat. If you were to call, we could actually hear in your own voice what you are asking the board to discuss. Okay, you need that number, right? I'm so happy that therapy dog is on the agenda tonight. What extension? 3004? Pat, are you getting a phone call? Pat, are you getting a phone call? Oh, it's calling Pat's cell.
Pat, can you read the question? I have to, can I say two things? First of all, maybe you could read the questions or maybe I would, I would offer a motion to table this till the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion.
Zero, four to network.
Kevin's calling, I think. Hi Kevin. You there? Hello?
Can, can we do two things? Could, could I offer the motion to table and then maybe you can forward those email questions to all of us?
Pat?
Now we, we do have a motion and a second already on the table, right? For adoption.
But, but you can motion to table during that. Which is what I'm offering. I would need a second and then you would vote on a motions table.
I mean, I, I, I go with you because it's not a, it's not a real emergency to get this done today.
Right.
I mean, to start in the fall, if we do adopt it, we'll probably have to deal with it by the next meeting, I would say, right? We'd be okay pushing it off till May. So I'm, I'm, I agree with you that I would second your motion to table, I guess, if I can.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I would like to hear Kevin on this.
Can you hear me?
Uh, Kevin, Kevin, are you on my line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Can you guys hear Kevin?
I can.
Okay.
There's a superintendent's committee mentioned that is to review the applications for therapy dogs. That superintendent's committee includes a canine expert. My question is, will the superintendent's committee be formed to review the current therapy dog application? Question two, what is the definition of a canine expert? Question three, how is lead to be used for the purposes of the therapy dog? If at all? Question four, will custodial staff be responsible for cleaning up therapy dog accidents?
Yeah.
Indoors as well as outdoors? Question five, I would like a clear definition of how students and adults opposed to the dog be handled.
Yes. Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay, so with these.
There's a superintendent's committee mentioned that is to review the applications for therapy.
Well, he's still, he's still catching up.
Yeah, we can have a conversation.
Yeah, you may want to go ahead and do your tabling.
Yeah, this is kind of silly.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin, would it be possible for you to send those questions to all of us? And then.
Form to review the current therapy dog. Question two.
As the host, can you mute, can you mute him as the host?
Uh, yeah.
All right. We, we've got a motion and a second to table this current policy. So let's go ahead and take a vote on that. And we can try to get answers to Kevin's questions, uh, for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
And, and if, all those in favor of tabling this policy the next meeting?
I don't think we have a second.
Yeah, Pat seconded.
I seconded it.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody opposed? Okay. So let's move on.
Indoors as well as.
I can't, for some reason it won't mute.
All right, so let's, uh, move on to, uh, approval of the MCSA cor- cor- coronavirus pandemic MOA. Have a motion?
That's it.
Motion, uh, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, okay. Uh, approval of the MFT coronavirus pandemic MOA?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Should ask any questions. Thank you. Resolution to approve the amendment to the IDI agreement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Approval of the back to pack donation to the district. And again, great thanks to them. It's a wonderful gift.
Second.
All those in favor? Approval of the bus request for 2020, 21 for Trinity Catholic?
So moved. Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
You only get the one finger vote Candy.
I'm not touching it.
Pat?
Approval of the budget status report?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Approval of the budget transfer report? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I think Kevin has a question. Um, never mind.
Approval of the extra classroom activity report first quarter 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Approval of the treasurer's report March 2020?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Approval of the internal claims audit report general for March 2020? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Approval of the internal claims audit report BOSI's March 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please? Thank you. Approval of the CSC CPSC report?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Uh, approval of the MOA with the MBAA?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? And personnel actions, Mr. Brady?
Uh, before I mention those, uh, Kevin did send me a text that he was a no on those two pandemic MOAs. Candy, you got that? Okay. So personnel actions on the agenda. Uh, we have, uh, nine of them. I'm asking for approval on those. We have two big ones there, uh, with, with Candy's retirement now rollic. Um, and I know Candy doesn't like fanfare, but, uh, we, I mean, it's, this is, both of them are big losses. Candy's a big loss. So she's 11 years been very dedicated to this district. And, uh, she's, since I've been here, she's been my right hand and, and, um, I just want everybody to know, uh, what incredible job she's done and how much she is going to be missed.
Is there such a thing as a motion with regret?
It keeps us afloat. I know that. You will be missed dearly.
Uh, so I recommend one through nine on the personnel action items.
So moved.
Second.
And we vote against her retirement?
Won't do any good.
Is this sick leave allowance yours, Pat?
Yeah, the sick leave allowance is, uh, it's not uncommon. We, when we have, when we hire a teacher who has, um, significant time in another district, uh, to give them some of their, carry over some of their sick time. In this case, it's the, uh, would be the new math teacher at junior high. Um, and the request is to carry over, um, uh, 20, well, the request was more than that, but we were willing to allow 22 days to be carried over. And those days, um, could not be used for payout at retirement.
All right. Any questions? And our motion first, please?
Oh, so moved.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Uh, any, uh, new business from any of the board members this week, this month?
I just have a, I guess, a question for Pat and I guess the, uh, the other, uh, policy committee members, do we want to try to get a Zoom meeting to try to keep going on our, uh, policy review or is that just not a priority at this point, Pat, in your view?
No, we could continue, uh, we could continue with that, Paul. We could do a Zoom meeting. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it if everybody else is at this point. I just last, last time it was a lot going on at that particular time.
Right.
Would the policy committee work on some of the questions that Kevin had or is that going to be dealing with um, the lady that wants to have the dog at the high school? Who's going to answer those questions?
I, I would, I, I think that's now at the board level and, and, you know, we just have to answer board members' questions the best we can and not bring it back to the policy committee.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be, uh, the way you would see it, Pat?
Right, you do have, you did have a motion. It was at the board level, went through first reading. Would only be if you're looking at making changes to the policy to take it back.
Right, so if we, if we, um, if we, uh, voted it down, no, I get, how would that work? If we've, if we, uh, did not approve the policy, it could be, it could go back to the policy committee?
If there were suggestions for revisions, at this point, we just, we have some questions.
Questions, okay.
Hasn't been a proposal to change the policy. It's been, there are questions that a board member has brought up to the answer.
Okay.
Kevin, I signed his hand up. Is there something you want to discuss for future meetings? An upgrade in your internet?
Write a note.
Anything else from anyone? Well, that's a, that's a first for all of us, I think. So it was interesting, but, uh, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you, guys. Thanks for hanging in there.
Okay. Have a good night, everyone.
All right, stay safe.
Well.